With liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Any changes? I don't see any lights, so can somebody make a motion?
I'll make one.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Tingel made the motion, seconded by Councilman Disco Ernest. Roll call?
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Item five is public comments. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak to the, on items that are within the city council's jurisdiction but not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot take action or engage in detailed discussion on any item that is not on the agenda. However, the council may briefly respond or refer the matter to staff for follow-up. Any responses to public comments will be included in the next city manager's update and will be, also be posted on the city's website. Do we have any? All right. Well, moving along. Item 6.1 is a presentation and update from Assemblymember Rhodesia. Ransom, where are you? You do not look like Rhodesia. Wait, it's not on.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers, public. My name is Melissa Santos. I'm the district director for Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom. Thank you for having me this evening. It's a pleasure to join you to learn about what is going on in the beautiful city of Mountain House and to share an update about what our office has been working on since Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom was sworn in in December. I do have a slideshow, and it's coming up. Perfect. A little bit of a visual. Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom representing you all in the state legislature, including Mountain House, Tracy, and Stockton, and French Camp. So, to get started, I'll be sharing a little bit of a legislative update, what the Assemblywoman has been working on legislatively, what we offer as support to our constituents, and what we've been able to accomplish since being in office about six months now, and some internship opportunities that we have at our district office. So this is a list of the legislation the Assemblywoman introduced this session, and I'm proud to report that seven out of the 10 bills that she introduced passed appropriations last week. So really excited to now see those go into the assembly up for a vote. The first, first one, which is one of our top priority bills, and it was actually the first bill the Assemblywoman introduced on day one being sworn in, was Assembly Bill 13, representative of our district, which would create a more equitable distribution of the representatives on the Public Utilities Commission to make sure that our utilities and the utility companies cannot continue to raise rates without reason and without accountability. This will affect our school districts, our homeowners, people renters, people, everyone that has, is, that pays into the utilities. So really excited to see that go forward in the assembly in the next couple of weeks. Another bill that the Assemblywoman is proud to champion is Assembly Bill 741, which fills a gap in protecting foster youth in CASA programs by requiring the Department of Justice to monitor Child Abuse Central Index and notify CASA programs of any child abuse investigations involving their staff or volunteers. So this will ensure the, the protection of, of youth in foster care. And this bill actually did already pass the assembly and is off to the senate, so it'll be going up for a vote in the next couple of weeks. We also are proud to champion AB 1042, which safeguards pollinator health by establishing a state-managed honeybee health program. We call this our B bill, and this bill would support the agriculture and biodiversity. Another bill that the Assemblywoman is proud to champion is the Water Rate Bill, is what we call it. It's AB 532, addresses water affordability by establishing a low-income household rate, water rate assistance program, kind of like what we have for PG&E with the CARE program. And this would work with the state and local agencies to ensure equitable access to essential services. We have a full list of the legisla, legislation the Assemblywoman has introduced, co-sponsored and championed on our website. Feel free to visit us on our website. Another bill before I move on from our legislation is a bill that the Assemblywoman was a co-sponsor of, did not introduce herself, was, was a original co-sponsor of, was AB 379. It did generate a lot of stir for some time, but it now passed the assembly, and Assemblywoman was a proud co-author. This bill would help, help fight to protect our children from trafficking with recent amendments. It's now more stronger and comprehensive than ever to hold the traffickers more accountable in this business. So please feel free to visit our website, or I do have business cards if you'd like to chat offline more about our legislative, our legislative work. And you do through our website there, asmdc.org/ransom, where you can find more details. For constituent services, a lot of people don't know that their state representatives can help with state agencies. So if you ever have an issue with the DMV, ADD, Medi-Cal, we're here to serve you. It's all free of cost to anyone who lives in our district. We don't check, you know, legal status. We don't ask a whole lot of questions. We just want to know how we can support you. And to this day, we have been able to close 294 cases in our district, and we have been able to save our constituents a total of $175,752 in, from state agencies. So this is when someone's having issues with Medi-Cal, and you know, there's some issue with the billing, that goes into our, our dollars saved for constituents. And primarily from unemployment is where we see a lot of it with paid family leave, with, you know, people that are not currently working. So we're more than happy to help, and all you have to do is call our office. I do display our phone number in a little bit, or you can reach us through our website, and we'll be here to serve. And we have our internship program, which provides youth with hands-on experience in state government office. We train our interns with soft skills that they need to go into the workforce. They leave our office with a lot of recommendation from the Assemblywoman and with the skills to go into a professional environment. They also get insight on state legislation. And the minimum requirement is to be at least 16 years of age and to be able to commit to 10 hours a week. We do offer a hybrid option for students that are in South County, and we're proud to report that we'll be onboarding nine interns next week for our summer cohort. So please do encourage your young ones to apply for our internship. Right now, we're gonna be starting applications for fall, as our summer intern has been, internship has been filled. This is how you can find us on social media, on the web. Please do stay connected. We share updates on there, on opportunities for engagement with the Assemblywoman, or on what we're working on. And we also encourage you to reach out to our office with anything that you need support with, or anything that you want to flag for us. We've been fighting since day one, and as you all know, with the new administration, it's been a lot of cuts to the federal budget affecting us here at home. So for example, one of those is the IRS office closures that were announced in our district, and because of that, the Assemblywoman has written a letter to the administration urging them to reverse these cuts that resulted in, which would result in people losing their jobs and these services not being available for our constituents. So all issues matter to us. We'd never send anybody away. If we don't have an answer for you right then and there, we'll find one for you. So please don't hesitate to reach out to Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom's office. And with that, I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
You wanted to make a comment?
Yeah.
All right.
Hello.
All right, come back, Melissa. Real brief.
I want to thank you for coming. I was hoping that Ransom was gonna be here, 'cause you, you mentioned about trafficking, okay? But with the AB 379, she voted, she voted against it, okay? Which normally would be a felony to hold 16- and 17-year-olds, the trafficker, responsible as a felony, but she voted no, and to keep it a misdemeanor. So I was very disappointed in her, because in Mountain House, public safety is our number one priority and stuff. So I wanted to ask her, did she read the bill, or did she just go with party lines and stuff? I do know that there was a lot of pushback, so it ended up passing and stuff, which is good, but I wanted to talk to her about that. And then the other thing, and if you could pass on to her, was I was, wanted to question her about her representing with Contra Costa. In fact, I believe it's Assemblywoman Williams for, they wanna go ahead and pay inmates minimum wage while they're incarcerated. And so I don't think that's a good, for her to sponsor that. And you know what? That's part of debt to society, and I understand, they say, well, they want it because that way they could end up paying restitution. But well, you know, they could wait till they get out of jail, get a job, because otherwise the taxpayers were gonna be the ones giving them a minimum wage. If they do a crime, they already get good time, worth time. So you know, I meant, so they're gonna get out anyways, but, but they don't, they don't need to be getting $19 an hour for being in jail for working. So I just, I was hoping that she was here so I could, you know, direct questions to her, but.
Thank you. That is, that's really helpful feedback, and I, I am able to address some of those concerns right now. Usually staff attends the city council meetings to share the updates, and she's more than happy to meet one-on-one as well, and I'll pass that message along to her. Regarding AB 379, there was a lot of misinformation on the web, right? That's the main source of it, and especially on social media. But Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom, of course, read the bill language and was an initial co-sponsor of that bill very early on. Assemblymember Maggie Crowell first introduced it, so the Assemblywoman was on board. There, when she voted no, was because there was a turn of events which resulted in a rush of amendments and language that was changed on the floor, which is not what the Assemblywoman originally agreed to. And the certain, you know, legislators, including the Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman wanted to take more time to talk with stakeholders and make sure that there was not going to be any more loopholes with this legislation, because that is what this bill was working to address originally. So she voted no in the intermediary to not pass it that day until those conversations with stakeholders were had. That is when we spoke with the DA's office here in San Joaquin County and other stakeholders to make sure that the bill language was going to do what it was intended to do. So that chapter of voting no was part of the, the misinformation. She was an original sponsor of, co-sponsor of the bill, and she was back on the bill as soon as the appropriate amendments were made.
Well, Maggie was the author of the bill, right? And then, then they voted to take her off the whole, and then, but the bottom line is, is I'm glad it got approved, because it needs to be a felony and stuff. But I was just, you've answered it, but I was just curious to why she voted no originally on that.
All right, Vice Mayor Tingel, do you have a quick question?
No, I, I have a comment. Could you pass on to Assemblywoman Ransom that I really appreciate, or we really appreciate her legislating for ValleyLink and also mentioning Mountain House, the newest city when we made the trip to One Voice? Many of the legislators knew about Mountain House. We were only 10 months old. But in her voice of talking about how important transportation is for the San Joaquin County, she did mention ValleyLink, excuse, she did mention Mountain House and our mobility hub, and what an integral part that we would be, be on that. But thank her for going ahead and setting some groundwork where we were known and known that we need to be part of that project and supported. And I thank you for that.
Absolutely. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Melissa.
All right.
All right. Moving on to 6.2. We have a proclamation proclaiming May Fentanyl Awareness Month. Councilmember Green?
So I'm gonna start on a...
Councilmember Disco?
Sorry?
You skipped on me.
Excuse me. I'm gonna take charge on reading a letter provided by San Joaquin District Attorney Ron Ferretti on behalf of this proclamation. So Rhonda's encouragement and commitment, excuse me, Rhonda Manning's encouragement and courage and commitment to spreading awareness about the dangers of fentanyl use are truly inspiring. We need more individuals like her who transform personal loss into powerful advocacy. This proclamation is not only well-deserved, it is a testament of, to the lives that she is helping daily to protect and the hope that she brings to others. I am proud to have her as a partner in educating our community about fentanyl poisoning, fighting for new legislation, and saving our children's lives. Signed, San Joaquin County District Attorney Ron Ferretti.
Proclamation, recognizing Fentanyl Awareness Month, honoring a major movement. Whereas fentanyl has emerged as a leading cause of drug-related fatalities in the United States, with its presence often undetected in counterfeit pills and street drugs posing a serious risk to our youth and communities. And whereas May is designated as Fentanyl Awareness Month, a time to educate the public about the dangers of fentanyl and to honor the lives lost to this devastating opioid. And whereas a major movement, a nonprofit organization founded by Danny and Rhonda Manning of Mountain House in memory of their son, Major, a Mountain House High School student who tragically lost his life to fentanyl poisoning at the age of 17. After taking a counterfeit pill, works tirelessly to raise awareness, educate young people, and advocate for prevention and change. And whereas on May 7, 2025, the city of Mountain House successfully hosted a community event in partnership with a major movement, featuring a screening of the documentary Fentanyl High, which brought together residents, youth, and community leaders to engage in critical conversations about fentanyl awareness and safety. And whereas Danny and Rhonda Manning and the Manning family continue to transform their grief into action, courageously sharing their story and advocating for informed communities and safer futures for all. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Mountain House does hereby recognize May as Fentanyl Awareness Month and commends a major movement, Danny and Rhonda Manning and the Manning family, for their unwavering dedication to education, advocacy, and saving lives through community engagement.
I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional. Thank you, guys. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers. And I only wrote so I could stay on target. I wanna thank each and every one of you today from the bottom of my heart. Giving special thank you to Rhonda, Amanda, Rex, Roger, Margaret, Matt, for all of your help with the Fentanyl High documentary. The director of Fentanyl High, Kyle Suntaro, said how he was truly, how he truly enjoyed being here in our community, and that he was so amazed at the turnout and how many students engaged in the Q&amp;A and part of the screening. Also, Mrs. Rachel Zerbo, the supervisor of San Joaquin Public Health Services, who also presented the documentary at the Tracy Theater, said it went so well, it was flawless. As majors' parents, we want to humbly thank the city of Mountain House for all of your support we have received from the day we lost our son. It has been nothing but full support from our community. We receive dinner every day from teachers, neighbors, and friends. And we reached out asking for donations when we decided to change our son's bedroom into our office for the major movement. We had people come with office supplies, desk chair, new flooring, installation of our, of this fan. Thank you, Matt. And I wanna thank Rhonda and Vice Mayor Bernice Tingel, along with the teachers and students for coming out to my son's celebration of life here at Central Park. Words cannot express the love and support everyone gave my family, and as I, we experienced the most devastating time of our lives. This past year, the San Joaquin District Attorney and the Police Narcotics Unit nominated and selected me for the California Citizen of the Year Award. I was honored, but as I told them at the ceremony, I would much rather have my son back. With that being said, I am also honored for this proclamation, but I would rather have my son back. My family and I are truly honored for this proclamation that honors the life of our son, Major Manning, who tragically passed away from fentanyl poisoning. Major was more than just a name. He was a 17-year-old teenager who was a son, a brother, a uncle, a nephew, a godson, a cousin, and a good friend. Like far too many others, his life was cut short by this silent epidemic of fentanyl in our communities. This isn't a choice he made. It was a tragedy that could happen to anyone's child, sibling, or loved one. Teenagers are supposed to learn from their mistakes, not die from them. I am not standing here today just as a grieving mom, but also as an advocate for awareness, education, and action. This proclamation is not only to honor my son, Major's memory, but to shine a light on a crisis that continues to steal lives across our country, our cities, and our nation. By recognizing Major's story publicly, we give voice to others who are suffering in silence. We open up doors for more conversations, more education, and hopefully more prevention. It's a step toward turning pain into purpose. Myself and my family of the major movement honorably accept this proclamation in Major's name, not to just remember him, but to commit as a community to awareness and change. Together, we as Mountain House can save lives in a major way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Let's move on to our presentation to the dear participants. Steve?
Kinda hard after that, but it definitely reaffirms why we do this program.
Yep.
And the hope that we can prevent tragedies like that. My heartfelt blessings to your family. We have students from Hanson. They participated in a lot of community service. They created different ideas of, of helping their community. We awarded points for their participation. One of the projects that they got involved in is Tracy Community Connections, started a laundry program for those in need, and these students here collected soaps and fabrics offering different items to help provide the service. They did such a great job that the Tracy Community Connections actually told us to stop, that we exceeded their expectations. So it's, it's pretty awesome when, when young people step up and do things like that. So these students here tonight, as I said, were awarded points. We're recognizing those students that earned 500 points, got a nice certificate from our city council, and some students did over 1,000 points and have a congressional certificate. And so I'm gonna please ask the council to come up front. My students are gonna come by and shake everybody's hand, and then parents and such will have a photo opportunity for you to take a picture of your students with the council. So thank you very much.
Are you gonna call them up one by one?
No, they're just gonna...
Come on over.
Come on over, shake everybody's hand like we did, said, and then...
Hey, now, scoot in, everyone.
Bernice, we're missing over here.
Here we go. Annie, come on.
Rhonda, come join us. Annie, this is all you.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Steve? Thank you.
All right. Gotta move all the parents' photos without us in the way.
Yeah. All right, good? Good? Great job, Ryan. Good job. Great job. Oh, wait. Get out of the way.
That's karma. That's karma.
Good? All right, guys. Thank you again, guys.
All right, moving on. Good job, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, what's next? 6.4. Stockton, San Joaquin County Public Library, Mountain House branch library. Heather, which one of you is Heather? You're Heather? Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Heather Bailey. I'm the librarian for the Mountain House library. I'm here just to invite everybody to come to the library. We're just across the lobby on the other side. We're open seven days a week. We have the most hours of any of the library in the Stockton-San Joaquin library system. And to encourage participants, 'cause summer's coming, we are starting on this Sunday having our summer reading program, and everybody can participate. I'm gonna start with the children, so they, starting Sunday, you can come in, you get this log if you're... You get this log if you're under age ten. And you read ten books, fill this out. When you come back, your first log, you get two voucher, voucher for two tickets to the Stockton Ports, as well as a book. And then, we have raffle prizes for like scooters. And there's just a lot of prizes for the children to win. And then also for teens and adults, the log is three books. And when the teens come back, they can also get a book and, and Stockton Ports voucher, and, as well as raffle prizes. And for the adults, your first log you return, you get this wonderful mug. It says, "Booked for the Summer." So everybody come. Sign up, your whole family, and then you can get this mug after your first. And also, just wanted to also encourage that we have a, our calendar is packed this summer. I passed out for the free programs that we have at the library. I just wanted to make note for the, the Wild Things Animals is the animals, like the snakes, the lizards, the other animals that don't necessarily have fur. Is gonna be in the TH1 room. The Marionette Puppet Show is gonna be on the seventeenth. And we have quite a few STEM programs with the partnership with Modesto Children's Museum and, and just other STEM programs. So just encourage everybody to come visit us at the, at the library. And thank you for your time. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Any question for her? That side? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, six point five. We have Chris Roycola from Rank Security. Chris, where are you, Chris? That guy back there? Kidding, I'm kidding. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm Officer Christopher Roycola with the Public Safety Security Team, and I'll be here presenting to you today.
Will you push the mic up a little bit? Yeah, thanks.
First up, we got specific incident calls. So we had fifteen suspicious vehicles, seven occupied vehicles, six trespassing, six after park hours, and six suspicious persons. We also had eighty-two daylighting warnings, sixty-seven crossing guard assists, and six hundred and seventy-five security checks of municipal buildings. So we do offer a free vacation house check for the members of the Mountain House community. And I've seen this implemented in other cities as well, and it has been an invaluable resource to homeowners in conjunction with the home security system. And in this sort of service, we would go and check and make sure all your doors and windows are secure without any breaks, no evidence of trespassing and things of that sort on that property. It is a free service for anybody who wishes to sign up. All they have to do is contact our dispatch. Moving on, we got community outreach. So in this month, our security team met with the Safeway Regional Loss Prevention Personnel in order to gain clarity on certain subjects, to be more readily prepared for any situations that might arise. And on top of that, we also attend the farmer's market every Sunday to provide a visual presence and really engage with the community, which is something I enjoy personally. We were also present during the National Fentanyl Awareness Presentation. And all of us have been very familiar with fentanyl and the use of Narcan and, and things like that in other cities. And I feel like we have a good place here in, in providing that education to the members of this community. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Councilmember Harrison.
Yeah, thank you for your report. You mentioned that there was eighty-two warnings for the daylight. When are you guys gonna start actually issuing citations for that?
I believe that's after we attend the, the training in Monterey. And I think there's some things to iron out with the code enforcement team, but we are working on that as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Sergeant Kevin Johnson.
So both new to the, fairly new to the community and definitely new to doing this. So, sorry if... All right. Good evening, Mayor Sue and city council members. So Lieutenant is Gary, he can't be with us tonight. And he is really, really sorry about that. So he said, "Kevin, why don't you go ahead and go do this for me tonight?" So here I am, right? Yeah, there we go. So this, when, when we say this month, it's, it means this past month. Nine hundred and five calls for service as compared to...
Do we need to upgrade our system?
All right, here.
Does it work?
Okay. As compared to nine hundred and forty-eight calls for service the, the prior month. And then we go into the stops, which are vehicle stops or detentions. Okay, you got, you got that. We had three hundred and two vehicle stops and a hundred and eight, as compared to the prior month, which was a hundred and eighty-six. And this last month, two hundred and seventy citations were issued in comparison to a hundred and sixty-nine the month prior. And of those, thirty-nine were stop sign violations and forty-three parking citations. April, driving got better. There was only seven accidents in comparison to March, which had twelve. Property crimes. There were twelve that were reported. That doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that that's all that happened, but that's the ones that actually got reported to us. The little saying over here, lock it, basically, you know, lock your cars, lock your houses up, and light it, meaning, you know, light it up, expose it, hide it, don't let people see what, see what you have. And if you, and remove it, take it out of your car, you know, remove the incentive for somebody to do it and then report it should something happen. I try to, I'm a big advocate of reporting things because it's the only way that we know if anything's going on in your neighborhood. Bicycles, e-bike, electric scooters, rules of the road. They are required to follow the rules of the road, just like it says. Unregistered motor and dirt bikes are not permitted on city streets or parks. Subsequently, if they are found to be in violation, there's some discretion to be used by the officers. But whether it be citations and/or applicable towing of the vehicles could, could definitely apply. Now, is there anything that I can answer? Any questions? No? You guys are taking it easy on me.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you for your report.
All right. Item six point six. Presentation on the monthly report from the Mountain House Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services, presented by Chief Marty.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, Vice Mayor, Mayor Tingle, and city council and staff. Tonight, I'll be presenting the April's Fire Safety and Report to you. We, last month, we had thirty-seven medical calls. We had twenty-seven alarms and good intent. That's down from last, last year this time, where we had seventy-eight calls. So we had a really mild April. Station two is, is... Oh, yeah. So that is what our, our good intent. Lot of times, we, we get out to a call and either one, it's either canceled, or we're unable to locate, or it's a non-emergency call that doesn't, doesn't deem to be anything significant other than either a Code Two call or a public service call. So that's a good, good example of what that, what that good intent is. Station two, station two is almost finished. We are on a punch list. I was just, was out there prior to coming to the meeting this evening. It looks really good. We're looking forward to having a ribbon cutting on June twenty-fifth at four-thirty. So we invite everybody to come out to the new station and, and see, you know, where we're gonna have our new station to allow us to be able to respond to the majority of our calls to the north end. And that includes the new development on the other side of Byron, Cuesta, and Altamont. We'll really cut down on some of our, our en route times and our service times in the community. So we're really looking forward to, to having that station opened. Fourth of July, fireworks are coming up. There is a no tolerance fireworks, no matter if it's a safe and sane. Obviously, illegals are illegal. This year, we're going to be out in force with not only our staff, but with a task force within our community and multiple communities within the county. We have a really good representation in the county FIU, the Fire Investigation Unit. Captain Fisk is gonna be out with the task force. We'll be using some of our equipment to be able to monitor during the days coming up to the Fourth of July. And the Fourth of July will be on a Friday. So we'll be active all the way through that week and the weekend. We will have, our drones will be up and about just monitoring the, the usage of illegal fireworks and be able to assist with other agencies in keeping our community safe. Fire prevention, we are in the, in the, the heat of our weed abatement. We, we use the months of May and June to be able to monitor and to mitigate our weed abatement. We use May to beginning because of the April showers. They bring May flowers, remember that? And weeds. So we, we allow, we allow our, our owners and our property owners to be able to mitigate the, the weeds without having to come back and ask them to spend that money to mitigate them through the month of May and June and into July. So we're in our second round. We've done a really good job in Mountain House. This is my fourth year here. And I remember the first year I was here, a lot of the developments that we, we have now were open fields. And so we're, we're closing that gap and we're doing a really good job. So we're, we're hoping to be able to get through the second round and not have to go into our third round of letters. So that's where we're at with our prevention. And then, you know, I put this in there because it's getting warm and for the public to know that the cars, no matter how, how, not... Just because it's not hot doesn't necessarily mean it's not gonna be warm inside your vehicles, especially for kiddos and for, and for pets. So we just put that up there just a reminder of the, the amount of, the temperature rises within the vehicle and the devastations of accidental family members leaving their children and, you know, leaving their, their pets in, in vehicles. So we just wanna put that out there because we do go respond to these calls as well. So we just wanna put that out there as a reminder. Last month, at one of the events that we had besides the Safari Kids and the Easter and our CPR classes, we were able to, we participated in a, a drone, our county drone program with OES, the Office of Emergency Services through San Joaquin County to help put forth the awareness of drones and the uses of drones within our county. And we had Congressman Harder, Assemblywoman, ran some out there as well. You can see in that bottom-left picture, Engineer DeBerg is a very influential member of our, of our department that has put a lot of time and effort into our drone program and our mapping program, which is, he is helping lead that within our county too. So we're doing a really good job. And it's also a tool that we're able to recruit and retain some of our members. That is it. Have any questions for this evening? I know I wasn't here last month because it was my birthday, so... Chief, Chief Fulmer took over for me. So he, he said that we did invite some of the members to our training tomorrow for our Wild Land, and we'll have some drones out there as well. So if you're available, we would like to see you out there too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. We're moving on to city council consent items. We got six items. Anybody wanna pull any of these? Nope? Anybody wanna ask questions? No? Take, make a motion?
Make a motion to approve without any...
Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we move on to item eight point one, one of our action items. Approval of the final city logo design. Drum roll. Disco, drum roll.
I know you're so excited. I know, we need to fan fear music. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, I'm excited, or we're all excited.
Excuse me for just a minute, sorry to interrupt.
What happened?
We're having trouble locating your presentation in the...
Or your logo.
You can give us an assist for a minute. Thank you.
We'll be at a quick commercial break.
What's this? I got a new logo for you.
Oh, you got one? All right. Let's start this again. Tonight, we are so excited to present the final step in our project that's been shaping our community and guiding, guided, oh, perfect. Guided by your feedback. This official recommendation to select our public-facing city logo. Oh, let's see if mine... There we go. Okay. Oh, wait, we gotta go back one. There we go. Staff recommends that council approves one of the final logo designs presented tonight. The selected logo will serve as our official public-facing identity, supporting everything from signage and vehicles to digital communications and merchandise. Back in February, you approved a new logo incentive to support our city's identity. The goal was a modern, flexible design to complement our city seal. We launched a six-week outreach campaign with the community. On April twenty-third, you confirmed the direction. A minimalist-style Seri B front as the primary font, no secondary font. It was left up to our discretion as a staff and visual elements such as trees, hills, sunlight, and homes. I wanted to bring to you tonight the surrounding nearby cities, some of their formal seals and the, they're also modernized logos. As you can see, because I know I didn't bring them the last time, so I wanted just to have you be able to compare them of what the San Joaquin, other cities, county cities are doing. Tonight, we're presenting five final logo options in which I'm pretty sure you guys all have in front of you the final logos I printed out for you. Based on your direction and the community input, these designs reflected the top themes and are built for clarity and scalability. We're asking you to support and approve one finalized, and we'll be able to implement them. Starting out with mock-up number one. It is the most minimal and clean. The partially-hidden sun adds a calm, grounded feel. It's simple, timeless, and uses our brand, brand colors. Mock-up number two adds a green patch for green, for open space and sustainability. A more visual sun brings energy and brightness. It feels vibrant, hopeful, and grounded in nature. It feels vibrant, hopeful and grounded in nature. Now these next three mock-ups, you'll see that there's similar design. However, the change up is the colors. And you'll see the difference when I go to each slide. Mock-up number three uses muted olive and navy for an earthly, sophisticated look. It feels more traditional and great for formal and soft presence settings. Mock-up number four uses more of a bold blue and gold for the strongest contrast. It stands out, ideal for signage and high visibility marketing. And lastly, mock-up number five, mirrors mock-up number three. However, you'll see that there was a swap in a white door versus a dark blue door. The small change adds a depth in contrast, especially in smaller sizes. It keeps the refined toned while giving the house a stronger visual anchor. So the next steps, we, once you approve the finalized logo, we'll begin to do the rollout phase with digital updates, then signage, then vehicles. A community campaign will begin and it will be introduced the logo in its meeting and we'll also update documents, letterhead and templates to reflect our new identity. Once again, the staff recommends that the council approves a final logo design tonight and we can continue on with our new identity. Is there any questions?
Questions on the left. Vice Mayor Tingle?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I know a lot of work was put in.
Question, questions first.
Question. The house looks like a doghouse.
All right, save the comments for the comments section. Anybody have clarifying questions?
Is it a doghouse?
It is not a doghouse.
If there are no other questions from the council, any public comments? No public comments. All right, now we'll bring it back for comments and discussion. Vice Mayor Tingle?
Well, you heard one of my comments. The trees and the roots, that's a story behind trees and roots in Mountain House. And is that why we've done that? Because trees have played an integral part in uprooting a lot of things in Mountain House.
Yes.
So it's almost to me a little bit sarcastic because trees have cost us a lot of money because of the uprooting, driveways, parks, everything.
It is, remember I brought back some themes last meeting and the April 23rd meeting? And rooted in community was a really high theme that you guys all really enjoyed. And so that's what it was called is rooted in community. So the roots represent rooted in community.
Any other, Disco?
So all of these are fantastic. Great job at putting all these different mock-ups together. Torn between two and four myself. Just want to give comments on four, color template, housing shape. The door is a little scaled down, so it's less of a doggy door. Feedback on two is the only thing that strikes me odd is that the doorway is white and it's a little taller than the roof frame. Aside from that, fantastic job on all of them. I'm definitely more favorable to four and share the sentiment on the grounded roots here, regardless of the trees that we've paid for. So I think we've earned buying this logo if we do go with that. So yeah, fantastic work. That's my feedback. Thank you.
I do like the colors in knock-up number four.
Sparky approves if it is a doghouse.
Councilmember Green and then Harrison.
So I am, I really like two. But I also like four with the exception of the circle where the circle around it. I like the vibrancy of four. I like the design of two. The house could be maybe a little smaller. But overall, they're all very nice. I think the only thing that is not my favorite is the roots going around. The roots coming out, going all the way around the houses and back. So that definitely signifies.
Think about the story.
Yeah.
You know, the one feedback that we got was that togetherness, right? When you think of togetherness, you think of hands, right? You think of volunteering, this community is really rooted in the community. We have high turnouts for all of our events. And so put trees aside.
I don't have.
It tells a story.
I don't have so much an issue with the roots. I'm just not, my favorite is not how it just goes around. So I would like to see it without the circle, but I don't know if that's possible. But I like the vibrancy of four. I like the simplicity of two though. So if I would have to say one was my favorite, for me, it would be number two.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, can we have a mock-up one on Mondays and mock-up two on Tuesdays and so forth? Since there's five days during the week and then I think well, that'll suffice everybody's what they like.
Was that it? All right, everybody shut off your lights if you're not something to say. Okay, my turn?
One last.
You want to, go ahead.
Could we put this up since it's kind of representing the whole community? And if we put a quick turnaround deadline on it, could we just open it up for the community to decide? And then we just affirm it?
Could we? The answer is, could we? Yes. Are we going to? I don't know. All right, I have some feedback too.
You got it. Where's your design?
It was not my design. First thing is, were there some other things that you chose not to use? Because three, four and five essentially is the same design.
It is.
And again, I don't know if other people will pick this up, but you know, if you see this tree, the roots are in front of the house, but somehow the leaves are behind the house. That's a, that's a one of those, what do they call those things that?
Illusion, I guess, like a...
Right, there's a, you know, you know what I mean? The tree's in front of the house, the leaves should not be behind the house. So that, I mean, I don't know, that's a huge deal. Of the five, I do like two the most. And I agree with them about the house and the door. We could probably...
I can shrink the door.
Yeah.
I can make, if you guys like the colors in mock-up four, because I also like those colors in mock-up four, put the colors on mock-up four onto mock-up two. Because mock-up two has definitely shown a lot of interest with you guys and kind of polling with staff of what I kind of went around to see. I pulled the same sheets out and individually surveyed them to see what they would pull and not being peer pressured in front of each other. And they leaned towards mock-up two as well.
I'm guessing that should, is a hill or a mountain behind the house?
Yes.
Whereas in three, four and five, that's like a little...
Three, four, five, it's a little hill. It's a littler hill.
It's a bridge, it's a bridge to somewhere.
I like the mountain and the house, you know, and then the sun and the trees. I like, of the five, I like two the best with, you know, maybe a little bit of modification to the house.
Yeah, I can definitely do the colors.
What, when do we, do we decide who, how do we get these colors again?
We got these colors from when you guys, when I came last time, you guys all picked these colors, these, this color scheme. You picked green, you picked blue, you picked all of these colors. You picked the fonts, you picked the colors, you picked the elements. And you also picked the style type, which is minimalist.
Yeah, no, I like minimalist. Don't know if all four colors fits.
I think if they're arranged, like if you look at four, they arrange nicely in that format.
If you also look up, if I go back, on your guys' handout as well, on mock-up two, you'll see the contrast of what it will look like if it's just a plain color on white or black. You'll see the contrast. And then you'll also see like the department markup. So I also, you only gave me a primary font. So our secondary font would be work stance.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Harrison?
I like number two also. You were talking about the changing the color of the house, is that what, or?
The shape of the house?
Or the shape?
And the door?
The door. The door, and then the colors would be, you guys are leaning towards these colors more. I really do like, no? You don't like those colors now?
No, no, no. I like the, I said, I like the vibrancy of it. However, I don't really think that, I would have to see what it looked like as number two.
Yeah.
Because I really do like number two.
Yeah.
I'm not sure those, I'm not sure it would work. But looking at the, how the cards are, how it's set up with the different black and white or white or whatever, when we look at it where it says city manager's office, like a business card, I like how that looks.
Yeah.
And again, I think all of us agree that the door should be smaller or, I don't know, maybe put a window.
I could put a window and make it not look like such a doghouse.
Yeah, make it look more like a house if you can. But I actually like how that card looks. That's just, you know.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So is the door shaped, I mean, we don't have any round doors in town. So is the door shaped just to complement the sun, the arching overcast of the rest of the design, I see?
Yeah, it's very round, it's a little rounded, a lot of the edges are rounded. If you see, I don't really have many points. It's all round.
House is the only.
Yeah, the edges of the house will be even more rounded when I get done with it. These are just mock-ups again, so.
I got a tough one for you, Amanda. I'm being completely serious. Do we have to pick one of the five tonight? No, I'm being completely serious. I mean, I just honestly, this is my gut. And we've talked a little bit about logos. I wouldn't say this jumped out and said, you know, to me, 100% happy, I'm not there.
Okay.
But if the rest of the council is 100% happy, then fine. But you know, this is, we're going to live with this for the next, forever.
I mean, not forever. It's not forever.
Well...
You can always change up a logo.
I get it, but I, we don't want to change logos every week.
No, you do not.
So I want to be a little bit happier than where I am right now. So, huh? Who chose the kite?
That's still. Who chose the kite?
No, this was before us, I think.
So Mayor, if, if you don't pick one tonight, I will take the feedback that you've given me, which is you mainly are leaning towards this mock-up two. I can change the colors, I can make a window and I can make different variations of this logo and bring it back next council meeting.
I mean, I guess it's not the end of the world if we don't have it for the state of the city, right?
Okay.
I'd object.
Would you, I mean, if three council members want to pass this, then we can pass...
I think a 20-day turnaround to do whatever we're going to do with it is reasonable for what we would do July 1st, right?
We can make it happen.
You're happy enough that you want to pass it now?
I would, I would recommend that we pass mock-up number two.
I mean, can we open it for public comment as well?
No, we already did public comments. But so you're okay with it? What about you, Bernice?
Of all of them, of all of them, I would select number two because I wasn't really happy about all the roots. And the door, because the door, when I look at two, that door's smaller because the door is halfway the size of the tree.
You're off. You shook the thing.
And it still looks like a doghouse, sorry.
What happened? Your mic went off?
The door's smaller and possibly a window because otherwise it doesn't look like a house to me.
You're not on the record if you don't speak in the microphone.
I'm going to borrow the city manager's microphone. What I could do is I could add a window above the door that's like a rounded type window, you know, one of the, oh, what's the shape I'm thinking of? Like a half oval, you know, one of those. Yeah, like a rising sun window above the door. Or in a smaller door. Like a rising sun, half circle window.
Let's see if we have enough to just pass it tonight. Are you, are you happy with the current?
I think with a few mods.
I am, but I want to know, Mayor, I want to ask you, what is it that you're not so satisfied with? Because is it the colors or is it the shapes or, because it's just not jumping out at you? And I get that. So I'm just trying to figure out from you.
Some of it is the color scheme. I know we kind of all picked some random colors, not random, the colors from the last. I just don't know that these four work great to me.
Can we, can we see the, can we see the other neighboring cities' colors just for context?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just for reference, also...
I'm just, yeah, I...
In the city...
But you still got enough to pass it, but it doesn't...
The city survey came back with these colors as well. So just letting you know, the survey came back with these colors and you guys agreed with these colors with the city. So the colors that we picked tonight are the same colors that you guys agreed upon.
Yeah, no, I get it.
With the survey.
I'm just saying the way it's set up right now, it just doesn't jump out at me like...
No, I get it. It's hard, well, you, the last time that we came, I came here, Mayor, you said, I don't care. I don't care. You make me something, I don't care.
I actually care.
So I try to make you something.
I actually care.
I know you actually care.
When you look at, when you look at like the logos from the other cities, City of Manteca? No. City of Stockton? No.
We're looking kind of big.
The only one in here that kind of represents the city that I think of is when I'm looking at Lodi because it has grapes on it because they're known for wine. But just a logo and not the seal.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's...
Actually, I don't like it either.
I like ours better than I...
I know Tracy one's not, Tracy logo is okay. I like this.
I think inside the triangle.
Yeah, it's kind of creative and it's, but I like, I guess I like the, I like the elements in your logo.
Is it the colors that you don't like?
Color, no, color and maybe some of the shape. Then you put, put back yours. Like I feel like the mountain is a little bit, I don't know.
It's funny, is some people in our staff say that reminds them of Bethany Hills mountain, I guess, or...
Bethany?
I guess Bethany's, the park.
Past the mountain?
Mm-hmm, as the hill.
I'm thinking of the Altamont and what? I don't know, again, just, just my gut, my gut doesn't say I love it. I'm just being honest.
What about?
I mean, we're not, we're not Field House though, so we got to have some representation of the mountain we never had.
This has a little bit less of the color.
We're not Field House, so we got to have some representation of the mountain we've never had as a Mountain House.
We're not what?
We're not Field House. We're not Field House, we're Mountain House. So like, at least if nobody's ever been to Mountain House, they look at the logo, they're like, oh, it's Mountain House. But we don't have any mountains in Mountain House. It's like a running joke every time I tell somebody where I'm from, they're like, oh, what mountain? I'm like, uh, the Altamont, like 15 miles from us.
And it's funny is because a lot of people that live here think about the windmills and you would think that in the survey that went out, windmills would have been a top element and it was not. Yeah, windmills was not one of the top elements that came back in the survey. 67.
67, that's a lot.
Hold on.
There's a lot. So this one has a little bit less of that sun, Mayor, do you like the less?
We go back to two again?
Two? I don't know if I can do side by side. Oh, I can go to the...
The spacing for me on the outlines is a little too stark on number one.
I can do, so look, the difference between one and two.
Oh, it's a different house, huh?
Same house, just a bigger...
No, no, much, yeah.
And just more outline around the elements.
Like I said, I can make a smaller door.
Honestly, this is, I mean, I don't know what, Dan's okay with two, Bernice's so-so, Ronna? Are you, are you willing to vote for one of these or you want to look at more?
I like, I like two.
So you would vote for two tonight?
I would vote for two tonight.
All right, Matt, you're the...
With the modification... With the modification of the door and maybe considering offline, if we're able to color swap and decision by email after we approve something like two, I would make a motion to proceed with two. But I've been here the least amount of time, so take that with a grain of salt. You guys should really be, the four of you should really have the leading voice.
Or no? Do we have a real deadline?
It depends if you want it July 1. To be honest with you, July 1, we will be allowed, if we get this approved with the small modifications, we can start ordering all of like new shirts for staff, we can start ordering tablecloths, we can start ordering those big items that we've been holding out on for the last couple of months.
But do we really need all that beyond just like a banner for the backdrop?
And a banner, and a banner backdrop.
But that we can turn around in two weeks, right? So like, ultimately.
Two days.
No, usually, a step and repeat usually takes about four weeks.
But, but I mean, if, yeah, step and repeat, I'm just thinking if we had a backdrop, right, that we were gonna repurpose for whatever city events, right? And we're gonna fly it in the, in the, in the, in the theater, like that's something that would take no, no more than 10 days to send to print.
A step and repeat, is that?
No, not step and repeat. I'm talking about like, you know, a, a.
Like a banner, yeah, a banner, absolutely.
15 by 20 banner, whatever we're gonna use for music in the park, whatever it may be, right?
Yeah.
So, I, 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 I agree with Andy that for that, we have time. We don't, we're not gonna be giving out swag and things like that.
Well, we are. We were planning on giving out swag.
But I mean, we can do stickers or, it doesn't actually, like, we don't have, we can do, we have 4th of July, we have all these other things that we could have two weeks.
We were giving, yes, minimal swag.
We can do minimal swag.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tingle, if she makes adjustments to the door, or maybe even adds a window so it looks more like a house as opposed to?
A doghouse.
Like a, like a square, how about a round window of a square rectangle door?
Sufficient?
I made the comment that two of all of them, two, two is more palatable to me if I had to pick tonight. Uh, this, this is another comment I want to make, two with a smaller door, or perhaps a window or, or something in that, that would be better. But believe me, as a logo, this doesn't really jump out and grab me. The other comment is that we're talking about is that this would be a logo that would be something that we'd have for, let's say, the lifetime of the city. So if it's not 100% buy-in, I don't see why we have to jump so fast to have it done by July 1. It, it's like we're just, I'm gonna have to hurry up and make a decision, but it's a decision that's going to make for a lifetime. And I don't think that we should look at it like that for the tablecloths, for those kinds of things. It, it seems as though we're, to me, getting out of priority. We're looking for something for lifetime and not just make something, make a decision in order to make a due date.
I think what I'm trying to understand is, is what exactly is it that that you don't like? I, I'm trying to figure out exactly.
A smaller, a, a smaller door on two, and it's palatable with the smaller door, like the door on four, perhaps.
I, I guess this is the way I would respond to your question is that.
Thank you.
I, I don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be one thing that says, that's because of that sun, I'm gonna say no. It's just the entire overall feel. And I, what I would like, this is what, I, I agree with her that it'd be nice to have it for July 1st, but if we don't get it for July 1st, it's not the end of the world. I would like a logo that we're all happy with, or at least more of us are happy with. And so I, what I would like is to see more mockups. Because this one is maybe, you know, maybe I'm 75% happy, but maybe you realign something and the next one, I, I, I say, hey, that one looks better. It's just a gut feeling, so I can't pinpoint it for you, you know? I don't even love the color scheme, like the, the four different.
What colors would you like?
No, no, I, again, I, I'm not a designer, so.
I know, but I'm asking you because when we went through the design process.
But you gave us those choices and we had to pick some of those.
Right. What, what colors would you like, Mayor?
I can't, I can't tell you a color. I would, I would rather somebody with some expertise come up with different designs, different colors, maybe just a little bit different than this one, and if that one jumps out to me, then.
Just, we can talk about it. We could make, we could make some tweaks, you know, because they're right, this is a long-term decision. And we don't want to put a, you know, we don't want to force a deadline.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're not forcing it. No, I wouldn't force a deadline.
I don't want to just vote for it.
Clearly, we want to try to find if there's something that, you know, obviously the door, we might want to look at a smaller door plus a door plus a window, and then maybe try some other things in this family of color combination. Just give them maybe, maybe we just take two and give it, play with the door a little bit, and then give them more color palette to work from.
Because essentially, this is two, two mockups. Three, four, five is the same thing with different colors. One and two are very similar. I guess I, I would, for something like this, I would want to see a few more to, to, to see which one jumps out more, because neither of these really grabbed me.
Mayor Sue, what, what would your feedback be on current mockup two with modification of the sun and the color palette of four, with maybe the outline of the light blue around the yellow, the smaller door in a rectangle with a round window up top, as, as Vice Mayor Tingle requested, some type of window and door. It squares off the door, makes it like every house in here. First half of all the houses in Mountain House have a round window over the front area of the house.
Do they?
Yeah. They don't have them from Hanson Forward, but all the rest of them, Wicklawn, Bethany.
You know what, Councilmember Disco, I would like to see it compared to some other ones.
What, what I will do is I will take mockup number two, because that seems like the most loved logo. I will do different variations with adding a window of different varieties of windows. I will do less color. Less than four colors, because it seeming like you wanted less than four colors in there. You wanted like two colors, is that correct?
I, I don't know that I would say that. If, if the four colors fit better to me, then I would take four. I would take three. You know, it's just something that.
Couple more options.
Complements each other. I, I don't know, I, to me, it just didn't jump out. I'm just being completely.
No, it's totally fine. It's completely fine.
Would a sun setting like rising sun make it look better if it was down?
Well, if you think about the mountains that are over on the west side, it's the sun setting.
Well, then, but a rising sun can also be a sunset, right? So that's, that was just my idea, is if we had a little bit of burst to the sun being a little lower on the horizon.
Maybe a little bit lower, yeah. So I will bring back with different designs to next council meeting. Does that work?
Yeah, again, sorry, I'm being completely honest.
It's okay. I would, really, I really value your opinions, because this is a really big decision to make.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for, you're right, it's not forever, but we don't want to do this every year, so.
Well, we should, no, we should not do this every year.
Yeah, so I, I, I want, I want personally something that grabs me a little bit more. And this one, you know, two is okay to me. Not, not awesome.
Okay, so I will come back next council meeting with different mockups of variations of mockup number two.
As a designer, I just want to say that two is currently balanced in terms of where the characters are, with the exception of the door, the sun placement, the tree, the, the, the shapes of it, it's complementary and conducive to a flowing design. So that's, that's why I ultimately like two as it is. But again, I've only been here five years. You guys have been here four times that, so.
Well, we all came up, we all kind of picked two. I mean, two is the best of five.
I'm just saying, the way it sits now, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna throw off the balance when you start moving things around, like the sun, or the tree, or, so. As a, as a, as a career designer, I'm just bringing this back to you guys as my point of view, as someone who has done design, that two is a, two is a balanced mockup out of all of these, with the exception of, you know, obviously, three, four, five are very balanced, but everyone doesn't like the rainbow thing going all over the trees, or the, or the trees being layered the wrong way. But that's the only way you can make it work. You can't put the house in front of the tree, or it's gonna look funky, so.
Yeah, but, so again, we just want to see a few, you know, few others. Instead of just going to In-N-Out ordering hamburgers, we just want to see, you know.
You say In-N-Out hamburger?
I'm saying, just, you know, instead of having two choices, just give us a few more so we can pick.
With a little direction, though?
Go ahead.
No, just with the, just a little.
Let me, let me have her. We did public comments already. Nobody said anything.
I'm just trying to, trying to get a little direction, like what direction are we? Because you're not really sure what you want, but you know that when you see it, that's gonna be it. And I get that part.
Right.
But have to have some sort of direction.
Well, so the direction for me is give us like five choices.
Of this same, of this same?
Of two.
Number two?
No. With the same elements maybe, but maybe with different colors and different door, yes.
If I do bring you back, no offense, I'm just kind of throwing it out there. If I do give you back something completely, like different mockups, it's, you're going to have the same type of feeling. You're still not going to be sold, if that makes sense.
I don't know about that. But, no, I mean, if you, if you, if you like it, you like it. If you don't, you can't fake it. I mean, I, if you, if there's, if you change it and all of a sudden I feel like, hey, that one really looks good, then I'm gonna, you know, that's the one I'm gonna support. Other people may not agree, but, you know, we may never all agree, but at some point, I, I feel like we could, it was worth spending another.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Are we, are we going with two, but just some different color variations of two? Or is it, so you want a whole new design?
Well, not completely new, same elements, but just a little bit diff, I mean, I like some parts of three, four, and five, too.
What parts?
You know, I actually, I, I like the roots, but, you know, but again, I, I just want to see more variations. You know, come up with a couple of other slightly different, but I don't want you to just change the color on two. That, I mean, that's, that's one option, of course. But come up with some other potential.
New design.
With the same elements, not completely new.
I think we can come, we can take parts of all these and put it into a couple things.
Yeah, we, I'll take little bits and pieces of it, and I'll change around number two, and I'll bring it back to you next council meeting. Okay.
And, yeah, I, I, my request is give us a couple that are a little bit different, so that maybe catches our eye better. Or we can even talk about it before the next meeting. We could do that, too.
Okay.
All right.
Except for it's not gonna be an MH in the hills.
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Could the little wave, could the little wave underneath be that light blue maybe for the creek?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Thank you, Amanda. We'll see you next meeting.
Nothing harder than that.
All right. City Council Policy and Procedures 8.2, Steve Pinkerton.
The good news is, is it has nothing to do with design, so our favorite subject. So staff is recommending the council adopt a resolution approving the policies and procedures in your packet. A little background, and in fact, most recently, you talked about this at your team building session on January 14th. But three of you actually started talking about this back in July of 2023, under then Chair, President Tingle's direction. We first started having the discussion about board governance and updating our board policies and procedures in head dialogue on July 13th. We brought it back November 8th, and the decision was made to hold off on any final changes until the city transformed into a city council from a district. And so after the district vote at your very first orientation back in May of last year, we had some discussion about this that then followed up with this dialogue back in January. So this is actually the fourth meeting where we've discussed this consolidation and updating of our board governance policies. And then on April 9th, you know, the, the minutes from that meeting and the direction from that meeting was approved of the January 14th meeting. And then this gives you the, the final document related to the policies and procedures. And, and it's also important to note that, as you know, incorporated in this are some other policies that you've already adopted on emergency management and on social media. So we, we really strongly recommend you considering this, because I think it really, as you can see here, encourages, I think, a very good process for you to go through as you govern. It also reinforces a lot of state laws. And I think it really helps encourage what you're already doing, which is a lot of respectful and effective interaction among council members and staff. I think you're already walking the talk on this, and this just reinforces this in writing to clearly outline the roles and responsibilities for the mayor, vice mayor, and council. Defines kind of the procedures and rules of decorum that you're following. Pretty much well defines the standards for communication, confidentiality, public records, ethics requirements, training, and of course, our code of conduct for how we interact in the meetings. And it, it really helps staff understand our expectations on what processes should be. It, it helps clarify the communications between council and staff, helps us as we put the agenda together, and helps us coordinate across departments as well, so that we can clarify we need to do things in a certain way based on council policies. So everything you do in these meetings, from agenda preparation to deliberation, is really covered in this document. And as I mentioned earlier, there's companion documents to this, including the, the council accountability policy, the Rosenberg's rule of order, social media communications plan, which we've talked about, the Munesp emergency plan, all these things, which is why it's about a 280-page document. So not only does this give this overview, but it incorporates other policies that you've adopted as well, so that they're all coordinated. And I think that, and, and it's important note then, even though you have these multiple policies, they all have this one home where they tie together. Whereas when, you know, you had a baby CSD back in 2009, you, you started out, and then it was added on to and added on to, which is why when we started having deliberations on this in 2023, the goal was to have everything that has been evolving over time to all get consolidated into one document. And that's what we have for you here tonight. So staff recommends that you adopt the resolution approving these policies and procedures. We have to answer any questions?
Nothing. No, no, no questions. Oh, you have a question?
Um, I don't know.
Clarifying questions only.
Okay, I'll just wait until we discuss again.
No questions, Matt? No? Any public comments? No comment. All right, let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Vice Mayor.
Overall, I think that the policies and procedures that were outlined were very good, because it has been an ongoing thing that we've been building on now for, for some time. I do have a, a question. It wouldn't be a policy change, but there was a portion of this document that spoke about new council members and the city manager would do the training. My question is that with new council members coming in, would there be a consideration of having the city manager and perhaps a a consultant or someone for a different perspective do the training? Because many times when, my gut feeling is that many times with the city, any city manager training, sometimes feelings might go in of talking about what's going on in that, in this, in the particular city. And a, for an overall of governance of what a city council person does, I think that if it's in conjunction with someone who's sticking with the structure of, A, the role of a council member and the duties that go, go within.
All right, and so what I think we could do, and I think that's in Section 5.1, is we could, we could adopt it tonight with an amendment that we add some language to encourage the use of outside facilitator to assist in the council training. We could just add a sentence in the, into 5.1.
Because as I said, I think that it's a good document, and the only other thing that I, that I saw that it came to mind, too, is that since we do have a mayor, and when there is a, a meeting, agenda setting and what have you, that perhaps the mayor and vice mayor should be part of that, because when someone is not present or reports out, or is not able to, to make it, it would be a good sense to have the two people to be in the same meeting, where the same flow, and you know the thought that's become behind things. And my, my feeling is that when you have a mayor of a town who's elected by the body of the people, that whoever. that whoever, the organization or the board should fall under the governance of the mayor and not come up with anything of their own, if I make any sense on that, that you're speaking one voice.
Essentially to include in the policy for agenda review to include the vice mayor in the agenda review process, is that correct?
Yeah, the gender review, that both be president at the agenda review.
Be up to the, we could add that in as well if you wanted to make that an amendment to the recommendation. So it's up to the council.
You have a, Matt, you have a thing?
No.
And there was a time in the past that it was the, the president and vice president would be in the, in the agenda setting together.
All right, we just have to be careful from a, just a, from a, we'd have to make sure the discussion's somewhat limited. If you have two members instead of one member, you don't want it to devolve. For example, if you're on a subcommittee or something together, we wanna make sure it doesn't create a, yeah, a Brown Act issue. So we probably just have to put some language in, making sure that as long as it's done consistent with the Brown Act. So if we were to, I know it's less than a majority, but still, it could, it could create Brown Act issues. So we just have to be careful with how the dialogue goes. And you wouldn't wanna be discussing the merits of items in that meeting, that's all. Just deciding whether or not something were to go on that agenda. That's the only concern with having two people involved in the deliberative process of setting the agenda, that's all.
And plus?
Mayor, I mean, I would also say that even beyond that meeting, right? It could be a serial meeting if information discussed in that meeting then gets relayed or discussed outside of that meeting and therefore creating a quorum on a particular item that was discussed inside that meeting.
And probably should have made clear, if it's discussed where the two would be in the same meeting, would be the same as two council members being in the same meeting. And the only reason that I just brought it up for consideration is when people are unable to make a meeting and what have you, let's say at the last minute, emergency illness or what have you, and you're there, you know the thought behind what was discussed, what, what, whatever the mayor was going to present or discuss, you know what, what thought came into it, just probably hearing the same things at the same time.
Just being briefed on what's gonna be on the agenda that way, basically, so.
You're briefed.
So again, it would be up to the council. We would just wanna put some language in that just clarifies and limits it to the dial, limits the dialogue to anything that wouldn't be a Brown Act concern.
Any thoughts on the right about having both in the meeting? Matt?
You look like you're very eager for that opportunity.
Hmm?
I said you look very eager for that opportunity by your facial expression, so.
To give you the opportunity?
Oh, no, I was putting it back on you and Bernice.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. Were you talking to me or her?
Both of you, I mean. I don't know, but wouldn't you guys both be the, like Ms. Bernice said, you be the chair on this?
Who would be? Who are you talking to?
It wouldn't be, it would be when we review the agenda.
Yeah.
Have the mayor and vice mayor in the agenda review.
Right, so, so, and so, for lack of a better term, a committee on things, things like.
It's not a committee, it's just.
Appointees, appointees for policy review.
It's kind of a step below that, but sort of.
Yeah, I mean, just to review it before.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but if it goes beyond just the simple review, that's where there has to be caution that it doesn't turn into a, a Brown Act committee.
No, just review.
It can't be a committee.
But I mean, feedback, like, you could, you'd still come and present the findings and things like that and we could pick it apart just like we would anything else. It's just that they would be the first filter to.
Well, the mayor sets the agenda normally for the meeting.
Absolutely.
And so this is the opportunity for the vice mayor to participate in the mayor setting the agenda so that in the absence of the mayor, the vice mayor has been briefed on what's gonna be on the meeting. Go ahead.
So there's presently a standing meeting in which the mayor meets with staff to set the agenda. And so what I'm unders, what I'm hearing is that.
He's listening.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the person that, the, whosever advised would just be listening so they'll know exactly what's going on, but not setting the agendas. It's not taking any responsibility back, it's from, from the mayor. It's just being onsite and listening so you know what is really going, the thought behind and the conversation, but not to set the agenda, that's in, in no ways trying to take, usurp any responsibility. It's basically no different in a way than two council members. You're getting, hearing information at the same time, nor do the council members when, when you're meeting, agenda setting, not agenda review, you're not going out and socializing it with the other members because that is a Brown Act violation.
We just have to restrict it.
Yeah, I think that would be.
You're just getting a heads up on the thought behind things, to be supportive, and that's the only thing that's supportive, because the mayor is the leader of this council.
I think that the biggest risk would be not necessarily that some Brown Act violation would happen at the agenda setting meeting or phone call, but rather whether inadvertently something that was discussed at that meeting inadvertently gets passed along to a third council member and thereby creating what the Brown Act calls a serial meeting, even if there isn't sort of a formal action that is taken in the way that you would make an action at, or take an action at the dais, but the Brown Act is restrictive in that way that it could create a meeting that the public wasn't noticed to participate or, or be involved in.
Okay, any other comments? No, yes? You want a comment? All right, your comment.
Well, not necessarily, I'm just trying to understand the purpose behind it. So I think that if, if you're the mayor and you get sick, then the vice mayor would take your place. And at that point, briefing on the agenda should take place with the vice mayor. Or if you're gonna be out of town and you know you're gonna be out of town, then the vice mayor should be briefed on the agenda. But I don't necessarily know the difference, if it makes a difference for both you guys to be in the agenda setting at the same time. And if it's a possible Brown Act violation, then that wouldn't be a good idea. But I do think that if you're not gonna be available, then yes, the vice mayor should be briefed on the agenda. But should it be an ongoing meeting where both of you guys are always there? I don't know how necessary that is. That's my comment.
Harrison?
Yeah, I know before, when we were aboard, whoever the president was, they're the ones that went and signed the final maps to the agenda. The, the vice president wasn't there, and so I, I, I don't see any difference. I think the mayor sets the agenda and if for some reason the mayor's gonna be out or, you know, sudden absence, then the vice mayor could be briefed, but I don't think they both need to be in there when the mayor's setting the agenda. So that's just, that's just my take on it.
Okay. I mean, I don't think there's consensus to make the change right now. We can always revisit it in the future if that becomes, I mean, honestly, I, I haven't missed a meeting and.
Don't jinx yourself, so.
I don't think I've missed too many meetings, so. And in fact, you know, if, if the mayor really was gonna be out for a day or two, we just reschedule the meeting, it's, I, I don't know that we, it's a, it's, you know, having both of us there causes potential problems with, I don't know how much benefit, so.
You know, I, I did bring it up, I'm not hard set on it, but I do know that over the years, there have been times when president and vice president have been present at the same time. So it's not anything that's an anomaly or different or what have you. It was just a thought that was brought up, but as I said, the way that things are now, it, it, it works. It's been working and it would keep you beneficial for maybe going forward, but I'm not locked in on it. It was just a suggestion, as I said, these policies and procedures, they'll work. They should keep us on track and in good order if they're followed, the way that they are now, if they're followed. But it's not a problem. After all, it's not a problem for me because, as my favorite phrase, I've been around since dirt.
Dirt. All right, we're good then. Let's, somebody make a motion to approve this.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, Mayor.
Harrison, second. Tingle, roll call.
Clarification, did you wanna add in the one sentence about outside facilitator for orientation being encouraged? Just, just add a sentence related to that.
Oh, yeah, with that.
Yeah.
You made, you made the motion with that.
Yeah, with that.
All right, we'll add that in.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Disco.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Aye.
Mayor Sue.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Moving on to item nine point one, city manager. Ready? City manager update. Two minutes.
All right, we can do it close to that. And I think most of you, everybody that Matt met, our new employee, who I think will, who, our new Mountain House resident, who is a management, our new management analyst in finance.
So does that mean she's with Sarah's section?
Yes, yes, yes. We've got some more things coming up soon, we'll be talking about that. And we're very excited to announce that we're, or Amanda's very excited to announce, we hit our goal of 500 Everbridge signups and now she's doubled her goal to get us up to 1,000. Thanks for all of you on Facebook that every time someone says, how come I didn't get noticed? You tell, you send the link to Everbridge and that's been very.
What's Everbridge?
Helpful. And you see the picture from the, that great screening we talked about earlier on, on Fentanyl High. And we also promoted the, don't forget about our, my Mountain House app and keep promoting that as well. And all our upcoming events, we'll be talking about in a little bit. We've got two recruitments out right now. We've got one offer extended at the moment, waiting to hear back on that position. And we're working closely, we continue closely work with our labor groups to get the class and comp study wrapped up hopefully in the next month or so. And as you know, we finished up the, the budget study session, budget next meeting, and then it's, yeah, Groundhog Day, budget's done, audit starts. Lot happening in Parks and Rec, bike rodeo, we had a great crowd. At the Frozen Music in the Park, we had a great crowd on May 17th. The pickleball courts are now available and getting used. Don't forget about the ice cream social and tech workshops with the primetime seniors and tennis revenue continues to rise. And a week from Saturday is the kite festival and the week after that is our first Central Park cinema. And don't forget about Juneteenth on June 21st and our Independence Day parade. Don't forget about our, our, we've got, I think, 10, we're, I think we've got 10 folks already who have put in their parade entries, hopefully we'll get about 40. And as Rank mentioned, we're having some good dialogue with, with Safeway, dedicated to help them be as safe as possible over there and working with them to enforce as necessary. The, the Mountain House Sports Center, that's the, the proposal for the warehouses over at the corner of Mustang and Mountain House Parkway. That application was received recently, we put it on the website a week ago Friday, and staff review's in progress and we'll be giving you updates at future meetings on that proposal. There's still a lot of work to be done to see if that project's gonna be feasible, to make that project feasible in that location. And we continue to have a lot of work, not just north of Byron, but south of Byron. There's a lot happening as you can, this is looking south towards Grantline Road. Lot happening around the power lines, a lot of dirt being moved down in that area. Pardon? The CS?
This looks like an old picture.
I don't know, it should be fairly new, those are. Last Wednesday. Those are the new houses there on the left of the power lines in A two. Yeah, those are the new houses. Yeah, I got a little confused, but it was an interesting angle, so I let it keep.
All right, moving on then.
Yes.
Nine point, nothing. Ten point one is report of future agenda items and long range calendar. You have a question?
What's happening at the warehouses?
What's happening with the warehouses? That's where the sport, I mentioned with the sports center, we're reviewing the application right now.
Oh, I missed that on your slides, I missed that on your slides.
Yeah, it was, it's called Mountain House Sports Center.
Got it, thanks.
And so like I said, we will be bringing back more information as we get deeper into the review of that. Because there are particularly parking issues we have to look at, at that location.
Like lack of parking?
Yeah, the, our lack thereof of parking, we need to get in a little more detail on that. And just a reminder that the buildings are about half full right now.
Is Deanza gonna remain two lanes in both directions?
Yes.
It is, that's unaffected by the traffic improvement?
Correct, we don't, we're not doing anything with Deanza in that area.
All right, ten point one.
No.
What, you?
For the, on the upcoming calendar, I didn't see summer camp starting June 16th.
That's right, we'll put that in the calendar for.
I'll add that.
All right.
Thank you, because that's right around the corner.
June 16th at the Unity Center, correct?
Community, you're absolutely correct.
Unity Center.
I'd like to see that added.
Okay, we'll put that in. Reminder about graduation this Friday.
Oh, it's not seven.
It's not seven?
Yeah, did everybody get that updated time?
There's an updated, because of the.
It's five, yeah, they sent us the wrong time.
Right.
Usually, seven's when they actually do the awards, but five's when we need to get there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be 93 degrees on Friday.
Is it really?
Yeah. Or is it 100 Friday or is it Saturday?
Crap.
I know one of those days is, is gonna be 100 and, and just, I, I, I meant to mention this with, with the fire chief, but given that we're gonna have 92 degrees and then 102 degrees and no humidity this weekend, you're right, Friday's 103, wow.
103, holy cow.
103 on Friday, maybe they should make it like nine o'clock at night at the graduation.
And no wind? Now there's some, there's some, there's some wind.
12 mile an hour wind, it says on mine, but.
So it'll feel like 101 instead.
Yes, exactly. But yeah, it's gonna be very warm on Friday and Saturday.
All right, 8:48.
Kite Festival's the following Saturday, Yak on the 10th. Next council meeting, we're looking at budget, our fire hazard mapping. We're hopefully will get the, everything wrapped up with French camp in time for the next meeting and we'll be adding the logo in as well.
Well, that looks like a big meeting.
It is, we, some things may, may or may not make it, we'll see, but some of those are consent items, so.
You're not ready for the bathrooms yet, the park bathrooms?
We're definitely not, we'll talk about them a little bit in the context of the budget and why we don't have enough money for the bathrooms right now. Meant to talk about that at the study session, but we ran out of time. Well, that's the challenge. And then don't forget about the, everybody's still got the ribbon cutting on their calendar. And please don't forget that we now do have confirmed State of the City July 1st at the high school.
What, wait, go back. What's the movie again? The movie's on the 13th?
Movie's on the 13th. Mufasa. Is the movie on the 13th.
July 1st at 7:00 PM?
July 1st, 7:00 PM is when we officially start State of the City, correct? Seven, seven.
I should probably make it home.
Yes. The teleprompter will be there waiting for you, so, the new teleprompter.
I'm actually working that day, but I'll make, I'll make it.
And then 4th of July will be, the 4th of July event will be on the 4th of July.
All right.
I just wanna put it out there, I'm not gonna be here for 4th of July. Sorry.
For the 4th?
Yep.
That's okay.
All right. Two less cars. Two less automobiles.
Yeah.
In the parade.
All right, let's go, let's keep moving.
We're done.
No more comments, no more comments. That's it, you're done? Steve? Item 11 is council members, let's go with Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Jody and Kusan for taking good care of Bernice and I during the One Voice trip. I really appreciate it, it was a very good conference, very knowledgeable, and it was, again, just thank you.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Thank you, Mayor. It's no sense in repeating something if you can't add any value, but my. It's no sense in repeating something if you can't add any value, but my kudos again to our staff. The only thing that I would like to add is that our staff have been attending One Voice over the years, and you could tell by the people in attendance that they were admired and respected for the value that they've added in the past. And I appreciated working with them and going along with them. And that was a very valuable trip that we went to representing Mountain House and our upcoming requests for funds for a mobility hub, a transportation mobility hub here in Mountain House. But we have an excellent staff, and and I felt very good, very comfortable that they were there. And even the staff here, it's very good to work with and have a team of responsible, knowledgeable people that will always be in place. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Green.
I just want to thank staff for listening. I've noticed that the presentations and the slides definitely have what the acronyms spelled out first and then continue, and then being able to really see that some things that we say, you guys really take that to heart, and I just want to let you know I appreciate it and I am learning my acronyms. Thank you.
Councilmember Disco.
I'd like to thank my fellow council members who are the wheels in the cog of SJ cog that went 2,300 miles with as well as our staff to represent our city. Thank you guys for taking your personal time to extend your service to the city and all as well as this council. So glad you guys had a great trip and were able to provide some voice and feedback with our representatives and back in DC. So that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
All right. Item 12 is city attorney, John.
Not John, I'm Raquel. But I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to see staff and council in person. I usually work behind the scenes assisting John, so it's really great when I get an opportunity to see you here.
13, Steve, anything?
Nothing.
All right, let's adjourn to Wednesday, June 11th, regular city council meeting. Meeting adjourned. All right, see, before nine o'clock.